Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the N I C Board of Trustees meeting for September 20, 2017. Would you please all rise and join us in the place of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a quorum. Trustee Meyer is not here tonight, but we still have four of the trustees, so we have a quorum and we'll move forward. No particular introduction of guests. Before we proceed any further, I would like to ask trustee Wood to read the mission statement.
North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the North Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if so, are there any changes or modifications? Hearing none, the minutes will be approved as presented. No one signed up for public comment, so we'll move right into celebrating success. Northwest Undergraduate Conference in the Humanities. Nicole?
Before I start, I want to introduce Rebecca Gann. She is one of my student leaders who has been indispensable, and she's going to say a few words in just a minute. But again, my name is Nicole King. I'm an adjunct instructor in English, and I'm also the conference director for the Northwest Undergraduate Conference in the Humanities. And I just want to start by saying I really appreciate the opportunity to come and brag shamelessly. I'm very proud of this event. I think it's a wonderful event, and so I appreciate the license to brag this evening. So, thank you for having me. Our purpose in organizing this conference was to give undergraduate students in the region what I think is a unique opportunity to present their work in any area of the humanities in a public and professional setting. We invited students from all two- and four-year institutions in Idaho, Montana, Oregon, and Washington. And I believe that this conference is unique for a couple of reasons. I think that it's unique because there aren't a whole lot of conferences for undergraduates in this area, or really at all. Typically, there are conferences for grad students and faculty. So, we're giving our students the rare opportunity to do something that really only grad students and faculty usually get to do. I think that this conference is also unique because of its interdisciplinary nature. We allow students to present on just about any topic in any area of the humanities, so it's incredibly diverse. As a result, last year, we had 50 students present their work on a broad range of topics. And as you can see, I think you have a copy of the program. So, there is a lot of different topics in there. They range—there are papers in there on Walt Whitman, there's papers in there on Aristotle, and social media, and self-identity. There was one paper on Caribbean music even. So, there's a whole—there's a vast array of topics that students did present on and will have the opportunity to do so again this year. These students and their faculty mentors came from as far away as Carroll College in Helena, Montana, and Pacific Lutheran University in Tacoma. About 100 people total attended the conference. And so, in addition to the 50 student presenters, we also had obviously faculty. We had other students who were there but not presenting, and we had family and friends of the presenters. The thing that was the most meaningful to me about the conference last year was seeing how energized and inspired the students were who presented their work. And I received a thank you note from one of the students who attended, and she wrote, "I want to thank you one more time for all of your work. It was such a great first exposure to the conferencing world. It was so nicely organized and such a friendly and comfortable environment to practice presenting my work. I've spent so much time and thought on—I love being able to talk about what I'm interested in with like-minded people. Thank you for your dedication to this conference. It has meant the world to me." So, I think that captures very nicely just how energized and inspired the students were who participated in the conference. Our second purpose in organizing this conference was to give our own students at N I C the opportunity to participate in and help with the organizing and execution of a professional conference. And our students did a lot of different things. They were able to serve on the paper selection committee. So, in that capacity, they were asked to read all of the paper submissions carefully and critically in order to make sound decisions about which papers to accept and which papers to decline. They also had the opportunity to serve as panel moderators, so that gave them public speaking experience. And then, our English club also applied for and also received a grant from ASNC. So, they helped us—our English club helped us actually fund the conference last year, which was a tremendous help. And then, of course, our students were also involved in some of the nitty-gritty details like decorating, and posting signage, and staffing the registration table. So, all of those things our students can add to their resume, which I think is a huge, huge benefit. So, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca a little bit here. She is currently our English club president for this year. And unfortunately, Ally, who was our English club president last year, has the stomach flu, so she couldn't be here tonight. But, go ahead.
Like Nicole said, I'm the English club president this semester, this year, really. And last year, while I was not an officer in the English club yet, when we did the conference, it was really my first big step into the English club. I entered into the club, and right away, I was immersed to this wonderful thing. And it was so beneficial for me to—as an English major—to immerse myself into this amazing event, to see what college life can be like. And I'm also at U of I as an undergraduate for my bachelor's, and it was the first experience I've ever had with a conference. And then, this last March, we went to the Northwest Undergraduate Conference on Literature in Portland. And after seeing our conference, it made it so much better to get to experience both. And it was just a fantastic experience, and I can't wait to do it again this year.
Rebecca worked her tail off for me. She—I think you met me at—I don't know—
About seven?
—seven, six thirty-seven in the morning, and she was with me until the very end, so—helping me at the registration table, so she was a big help. Before I sit down, I just want to note that we are hosting this conference again this year, so please mark your calendars. This year's Humanities Conference will be on Saturday, November 4th. We hope that you will attend. We hope that you will encourage others to attend. I also want to note, though, that you don't have to attend the whole conference. I hope that you will come see our students in action as they give their papers and do their thing. But if you want, you can—there's a flyer, I think, at your desk. If you want, you can opt to just attend the dinner and the keynote with Susan Swetnam. And by the way, Susan—we're excited to have Susan. I think that she's going to be a fabulous speaker. Several of our faculty know her and have worked with her. And she actually just recently received the award for Outstanding Achievement in Humanities from the Idaho Humanities Council. So, a very prestigious award given to her by a very prestigious organization. So, she's a big name in the humanities, and we're thrilled that she's going to be with us this fall. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? I guess I'd like to comment on—you know, looking at last year's brochure that you gave us, and the topics were thought-provoking, interesting. Anybody who wants to think a little bit gets an opportunity to do that, and it's a pretty exciting project. So, you ought to be both congratulated on making sure that this continues here at N I C. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having me. Thank you.
Our next agenda item is—the constituent reports, the ASNC report. Caleb Weeks. Caleb?
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Board, President McLennan, presence Cabinet, guests, staff, faculty. I guess to make a comment on the undergraduate conference really quick. When I was vice president and English club submitted the request to help get funding for the conference, I remember looking at it and thinking, "Wow, this is a large percent of our budget," because they asked for well over $1,000. And I just remember looking at it and thinking, "You know, I have faith in the club." I remember working with Ally specifically, who was the president, and I heard from the event after it was funded, and it was a huge success. So, I'm really happy to see that we're hosting it again because it is a great event, and unfortunately, I can't be there again. So, sorry, English club, but I'll be there next year. I'll make a note of it. So, I guess to talk about what ASNC has been doing. Recently, we just came back from a retreat, and we had a lot of fun. We kind of did group dynamics, leadership building, and just overall getting to know each other with a lot of personal development and growth. And it has been really excellent to see our team function better than it ever has before. We feel more like a family than a team, honestly, especially when you're stuck in the woods and you're forced to sleep together and kind of—well, it sounds a little bad, but like forced to be together like for a few days. It can be a little bit tough. But because of the retreat—that we went on, I would like to think that we really grew and we really developed as a team, and I'm really excited to see where we go for this year. I'll just briefly explain a couple of things. We played a lot of games, especially at night when you're kind of sleep deprived and things get really weird when you play games. So, we played a game called Common Ground, and it's where—it's kind of like musical chairs, only you say something that you think you share with somebody else. So, I shared Common Ground with somebody who's in ASNC, and anybody who's in ASNC would have to get up and run to a seat across the room, and whoever was left standing would continue. So, it's a fun way to really know each other and just get to know how people operate and what they think, and honestly, just what we have in common. Another one we did that was really weird was we tied ourselves together with climbing rope, and we walked around N I C's campus holding a yoga ball. That was our leadership. And so, we kind of just communicated. We'd carry leadership and transfer, and we had a—we got some weird looks from students and some staff and faculty, all—ten of us just tied together by our waist and trying to walk and function as a group, and it was really interesting. So, it's really good, this retreat, because it really gets critical thinking, and it really gets us motivated, and just great time to know each other and get to just develop as a team and as a family. So, that was one thing that we just got back to. I am still catching up on homework, unfortunately, and work. One thing that we really did was action planning. We're really big into specific planning, and so we started talking about projects and what we're going to be working on for the year. So, we kind of developed plans to present these next week at our morning meeting on Tuesday. And I'd just like to briefly describe what some of our senators are going to be going over. Allison Alberton, one of our senators, has a project that she was asked to do by a teacher—oh, professor, sorry. Apparently, the first day of school, the College Skill Center ran out of calculators for students who couldn't afford their own, and so they rented them out for the semester. And there was a lot of students who didn't have that tool because they were already taken away from them. So, I came up with the idea of contacting this teacher after she contacted me, and then getting Allison to write a grant for the foundation board to get 40 more calculators, the T-84 and T-89s, for students who can't afford about $130 calculator. So, that is a really good project that Allison is going to be working on. We have Ben Anderson, who's going to be working on a POS system for Emory's. Currently, they only take cash and check, which sometimes when people go in, they don't know, and this really helps with community outreach because community members come in also. And I know N I C has been working on a POS system for a few other locations, so why not get Emory's up to date, and then we can start taking card, and hopefully, that really benefits Emory's as a whole. We have Elizabeth, who's actually working on teacher evaluations for all teachers. She noticed that for teachers who have tenure, they don't get evaluations because why evaluate a teacher who has tenure? We mostly do it for newer teachers most of the time. And so, she was looking at getting evaluations for all teachers to continuously see improvement and to make sure that teachers are functioning best and connecting well with students, and that students feel as though they have a say on what goes on on campus. And then, our new hire, Peter Sotberg, he's working on block scheduling, and also, he's going to be working with guided pathways pretty soon to kind of develop that guided pathways committee that we really, really need to get instituted on campus, and he's going to be working on making scheduling better for students, especially for classes that fill up fast, such as math classes and communication and English classes. And then, finally, I gave everybody—sorry, I didn't include in the packet—a little half slip of paper. Unfortunately, we had another senator who was unable to continue due to personal reasons, and so we had to fill her spot too, in which we hired Emmeline Kidderman. She actually applied last minute, and she lives in the dorms, and I'm really excited to see what she can accomplish on campus as well. So, finally, we have a full board, and we elected our senator pro tempore this Tuesday, who is Peter Sotberg again. So, he's going to be part of the leadership team, and we're excited to see where that goes. One more thing that I've been working on, and so has ASNC a little bit, is the Student Fee Advisory Committee, which I'm not sure if you are aware of that, but that was started by Sean Collins last year, in which I was made the chair of the last meeting. He was able to attend as a president. And one thing we've been working on is we're looking at student fee-funded programs such as athletics and part of the library and whatnot in ASNC. And I came up with an evaluation to kind of send to all of these programs and the fee managers who are in charge. And the purpose of this is to kind of just gauge interest on what these programs are using the student fees on, and how it really ties in with N I C's mission, vision, and values, and how it affects the students that are currently utilizing these programs and have utilized these programs. So, what we do right now—and what we're doing right now, sorry—is just kind of looking at how they function and how they can really better implement and utilize these funds. So far, I didn't send anyone a copy of this because it's not a finalized, but I came up with a template, and it has the committee charge on the front, and also a list of all the fees and what is used and how much the fees are. And then, on the back, it's just a few general questions for these departments to kind of gauge where they're at, and also to provide a budget to see what they're using these monies on. The overall purpose of this committee and the reason why we're doing this is to just bring transparency on campus for the students who don't really know what they're paying for. And so, that's about all I got. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Christie?
Well, that was a very meaty report. I don't know where to start. You had a lot tonight.
Yeah, I've been busy.
Great team building, and that's awesome. You'll find that you really work really well together when you go through one of those team-building exercises. Calculator idea, fabulous. That's really going to directly impact the classrooms, so good job.
Yes, and that will definitely impact future students as well, which is why I was looking towards long-term how that will benefit the college.
And I really like your idea of examining the student fees to make sure that—it's one way to hold government accountable, so good for you. I also wanted to commend you today on your speech for the opening of the Veterans Center downstairs. You did a very nice job.
Thank you.
Well, first, I'll echo what Christie said, and it was good to see you down there today. Glad you could be there to support that.
Thank you, Todd.
I guess a couple of thoughts. One is thank you for the list of the senators. I know I was one of the ones that requested that.
Yes, yeah.
I appreciate that. And glad that you could have a full staff.
Mm-hmm.
Right to the end here, it sounds like, at least for the moment.
Yeah, it took a little bit of time, but we finally got it down.
Now, I did notice there's a Sarah on both lists, but with a different last name. Is there congratulations in order? Did she get married?
She did, yes, yeah. She got married a few weeks ago.
Okay, well, good news there. I think that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
I just have a point of clarification, and it's because I don't know, but you said tenured staff not evaluated. I'm assuming that's by student survey or student evaluation? I'm certain that our tenured staff are evaluated by—
Yeah, there are some who are in some classes. I myself have not personally received some in, so I don't exactly know the cause as to why or who really is in charge. But there are some who—at the end of the year, I was given—or end of the semester, sorry—I was given an eval, but some I was not.
So, a question then would be what is our standard operating procedure on that?
I see Dr. Burns coming to the microphone, so—
[laughing]
Dr. Burns?
I would be happy to answer this question, Chairman Howard, trustee Murray. Yes, the policy and procedure for tenured faculty is that they receive a student evaluation. They select a course each year during their—after they receive tenure. They select a course where students evaluate them. Those are compiled. And then, on the third year after they receive tenure, they receive a summative evaluation. So, it's formative evaluations during the one, two, and third year. The third year, they receive a summative evaluation. And it's—you know, I suspect that there are students who their courses are not selected to be evaluated just by random selection, so that can happen.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Brad's question. How many classes does a typical—remind me, how many classes does a typical instructor teach? So, you're saying one out of how many are then evaluated by the students?
So, they are assigned a load of 15 credits.
So, five, six?
So, it's five—on an average, five courses, depending on what they teach. If they teach four and five credit courses, then of course, it would be less than that a semester.
Thank you. Before you sit down, Caleb, let me tell you that as I listen to your report, it sounds like a pretty aggressive agenda that you have set for ASNC this year, and I'm hopeful that you're getting buy-in from all of the senators and their participating in this. It's obviously a pretty healthy number of projects that you folks have taken on. But I want to congratulate you. This is going to be a test of your leadership, and so far, so good. It's looking very good. So, we're looking forward to the reports in the future of how you're progressing on these. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been a pretty hard test, I'm not going to lie, but manageable so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next report is Staff Assembly. Suzanne Dean, excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. So, Staff Assembly had our first meeting last week. It was a pretty full agenda. We started with Jessica Bennett, who gave us kind of an abbreviated version of what she gave you guys at the last board meeting on the Student Wellness and Recreation Center. And she went over with the employees some of the highlights that might be of interest to them, what the pay schedules could be as far as payroll deductions, that sort of thing. Then, we had Tim Gerlitz from Disability Support Services, who gave us also an abbreviated version of his presentation on service animals. This was very interesting. I learned an awful lot from that one, and I would really look forward to hearing the full presentation. He did tell us that a service animal can be a dog or a miniature horse, and that's it. Personally, this was very reassuring to me. Nobody's going to show up in my office with their service tarantula, so I was very pleased with that information. Then, we had Kathy Sparks, who is the Staff Assembly Vice Chair, and she gave us an overview of this great new SharePoint site that she has created for Staff Assembly, so that we are posting our minutes and our agendas online and just sending out the link to staff every month, so we don't have to clutter up their emails with all of that paper, all those files. So, that was it for Staff Assembly for the meeting. Outside of that, I've been working with the different committee chairs to fill the openings that they've got for staff members on their various committees. So, that should be wrapping up this week.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just that I agree about the spider and a snake.
Yes, I'd go with that.
Thank you. Our next report is Faculty Assembly. Jeff Carr.
Thank you, Chairman Howard, and fellow trustees. The Faculty Assembly invited Thomas Scott, the Director of E-Learning, to tell us about the school's transition from Blackboard to Canvas, to alert us of the many training opportunities that will be available to faculty members so that our courses can be as good as possible come this next summer semester. We also talked about the faculty compensation policy and passed a resolution that affirms our support for the version that passed to the Senate. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Great, thank you. Next report is from the Senate. Lisa Kilerman.
All right, good evening, Chairman Howard, trustees, President McLennan, and guests. The Senate held its first meeting August 24th. Our first order of business for the year was to have a formal vote to approve the name change of the bookstore, as I talked about last meeting, and that name change was unanimously approved, so we took care of that. Since this was the first meeting of the year, all the senators from the three constituent groups introduced themselves, and we also decided this year to elect a recording secretary for Senate who comes to all of our meetings and takes our minutes but does not serve in a senator capacity. So, we met our recording secretary. We did not have any proposed procedure or policy submissions at our first meeting, and so we did review the duties of a senator and what they are tasked with, and we talked a little bit about how Senate as a whole, as a unit, fits into the process of shared governments at N I C. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Any questions or comments? Lisa, thank you very much. Next agenda item, President's Report.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. Thank you to those board members who were able to attend the ribbon-cutting for the newly open Veterans Center today. It was really a nice turnout, lots of community members, and I announced today that we would be forming—I would be forming—a veteran-student or student-veterans advisory committee and inviting public involvement in that group. And it's purpose to extend out our commitment to support veterans in our community and make sure that North Idaho College is seen as a place where veterans can take that next step with their post-secondary education, and they're going to be treated well, supported along the way. So, more to follow on that, but I just wanted to let you know that I appreciated you all being there today. I'd also like to thank trustee Banducci for attending the coaches' showcase last week. It's an annual event where the coaches present their goals for the year. We introduce some athletes, talk about how they did last year, how much better they're going to do, or the same they're going to do this year. It's a great event. It was held out on the deck at La Peep, and it looks like we're going to have a great and engaged athletic program this year. You may have seen today, we had two soccer matches taking place, one in the downpouring rain early, unfortunately. That was the women, and then the men played at 4:00. Our planning activities are ramping up, well underway. Yesterday, our 80-plus member management team held with a follow-on activity with the visioning exercise that commenced at convocation. It was really a lot of fun. Actually, VP Chris Martin led that event with a lot of enthusiasm, and it was infectious, and the whole group caught it. On October 6th, we will be holding a visioning 2.0 event, college-wide event, similar to convocation, but to cycle back some of what we've learned and heard throughout this process over the last month or so, and get reactions and input. And I want to make sure that the board knows that you are invited to that exercise as well. That's Friday, October 6th, 1:00 to 2:30. It will again be facilitated by Jason Swain, who facilitated our convocation event. Update on the Dean of Enrollment Services search. We had three finalist candidates. This is the week where we are going through the on-campus review of those candidates. We had two, one on Monday and Tuesday. Took today off, and we have our last candidate tomorrow, so you should be hearing about that soon. With respect to the Associate Vice President of Planning, that position is still in development. We did want to launch two searches at the same time, and so that position will go out in the next few weeks. Don't have a lot to say about our—the relationship forming with Gizmo, but I do want to let you know that we are on track. We've had some really productive meetings over the We've had some really productive meetings over the last month, month and a half or so, and we are working really hard to ensure that both entities, NIC and Gizmo, are focused on, on a shared vision, and we're getting there. So, I'm very optimistic about that. I hoped actually, too, at the October board meeting, to share with you a little bit more about the Center for Co-Creation, or the Co-Creation Center, as we're calling it, with some work that's being done in the Headland Building, some activities that are already being built there, not built, but developed, and how Gizmo and some of the other things that we're going to be doing will hopefully fit into that. So, more to follow on that. Governor's Task Force on Higher Education concluded its work this past Friday. Very fascinating process to be a part of. I put at your places, and I put some out here for folks, and there's a couple on the back table. This is a summary that we received at the beginning of the meeting before any voting had taken place. There's nothing different at the end of the process than what you see on this paper. These are the framework, I would say, for the recommendations. The actual full recommendations for the four subcommittees is actually quite large. And so, a couple of things that I want to point out here, well, first of all, we did meet for the fight, for the final time. Next steps will include a process to go through prioritizing, there's a lot in these recommendations, and there's a lot that has financial consequences or considerations that will need to be considered along the budget development process, recommendations from the governor's office, and certainly what will come out of J.FAC as we go forward. So, there will need to be some process to go through, you know, what do we do first? And some of them are pretty high-ticket items. Of interest for tonight, though, I do want to just take you to the second page on the outcomes-based funding model. And what you see there is really a framework for that. It's pretty difficult to get to this stage. The subcommittee that worked on funding worked furiously to the 11th hour and could get to the framework and agree on the framework, however, the metrics associated with that, the weighting of variables and how they will be calculated and applied to the institutions, that work has yet to be done. And I'm sure you can appreciate that that's the real work. That's where the rubber hits the road on this. So, we're, we will be, we will be involved in the process of assigning the weightings of the variables along these factors. One that you'll see in there is the verifiable job outs. That's something that North Idaho College pushed on very hard throughout the outcomes-based funding discussion. And the notion there is that if we're going to give, if we're going to receive credit for transferring students short of their attaining a degree, we have a whole nother group of students that transfer to work short of attaining their degree as well, and we want to make sure that that work is, that effort is recognized. So, we're pleased to see that become part of the, part of the recommendation. And I'll, if you have questions on any of this, my last comment is that I'll be away from October 25th to 28th, joining trustees Banducci and Murray at the Association of Community College Trustees in Las Vegas. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional information.
Thank you. Well, a couple of them. I would love to see, maybe you could give to all the trustees copies of the job description for the two positions that you talked about. That'd be interesting to me, to see what the job description is.
Okay, we can do that, sure.
And then, on the Governor's Task Force, first of all, thank you very much for serving on behalf of NIC. That was a lot of time and energy on your part, and we're very proud of the work you've done. I have questions about the outcome-based funding model. Is it your impression that this task force, that everything in here is going to be adopted?
These are recommend, well, so, these are recommendations to the governor. It's the Governor's Task Force. I think what, the answer to the question is, I don't know. I think you'll see an answer to that in the form of how the priorities are set.
Okay.
So, what you see as priorities are obviously, I think, the things that either through the governor's thinking are those things that are more of a priority, or have more of, perhaps even more of a chance of moving the needle more quickly on that 60% goal. Because remember, that's the, that's what drove this task force to be created in the first place. So, whether they're all, except, there are so many, and such a diversity of things that were recommended out of each of these subcommittees, I can't imagine.
Blanket adoption, all at once?
Well, just, again, you're going to see a prioritization process that's going to shake some things out, I think.
Well, I noticed in FY 2019, we'll just keep doing what we're doing when it comes to budgeting.
So, that's through this January, right, for our J.FAC trip in January?
I would assume.
As usual?
So, yeah, the, you're right, that there's a, there's a year, we have a year now, and we're going to be collecting, looking at data and applying our data as we're going through it to this model for the weighting variables that I mentioned earlier. Am I that right, Chris? And so that when we do go live with this, we're going live. We're not doing something based on a three-year rolling average or something like that. It'll, it'll be, the data will be the data, and the weighting, the metrics will be the metrics.
Okay, thank you.
I guess just along Christie's question, I will say, I'm glad to see we're not going to just rush into this, we're going to take our time as we step into it. Rick, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just out of curiosity, there's a lot of lofty goals here, and there's a lot of high-level phrases and thoughts and concepts. Can you give me an example, and again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, and if there isn't one that you can give me, that's okay, but is there like one low-hanging fruit, actionable item that was identified, you know, that we think can attack these sorts of things, or is everything going to be a year or two or three away? You know, I mean, was there some obvious things that they thought they could make some changes in the short term that kind of jumped out at you, maybe?
Yeah. Trustee Banducci, yes, I, you're right, some of them are, I mean, some of the, some of the discussion that happened on Friday, you know, we talked about anything from a statewide platform ERP, management information, student information system, that would be shared by all public universities and colleges. That probably would have a price tag of about somewhere between, no less than 50 and probably closer to $70 million to get that implemented. And then you have the business process design that has to be put into some common ground for all these institutions to work toward. That's, in the discussions on Friday, that was a three-year lift. It's probably more of a five-to-seven-year lift, realistically, and it's, anyway, that, so there's that. I think on the more practical side, we, I served on the P-20 Pipeline Committee, looking at, you know, we, the community college has been trying to make the case all the way through this, that if the 60% goal is probably reasonable, is something that we ought to be pursuing, and probably will never go away, but if we don't deal with what's on the input side, you know, who we're working with, it's going to be really hard to achieve that, anything near that. And so, I wanted to be on the P-20 Subcommittee. One of the recommendations that it's buried a little bit, it's kind of moved up to the top, but it's basically looking at how students have the conversations around movement from post-secondary education into secondary, I mean, from secondary education to post-secondary education. And right now, most of that effort is being done through the K-12 structure. Our thought, and it's not just our thought in relation to the Governor's Task Force, but it's our thought in relation to our own line item requests that we submitted to, to the state this year, is that there's a role for higher education to have in that work. And been some pretty good success down in the College of Southern Idaho. I think they've got eight, maybe a few more, but I think it's eight, college employees, academic advisors, career advisors, who are in the schools, working with students to help them understand the complexity and the fullness of the pathways that they have access to, moving from high school into the, into the post-secondary environment. And so, we, we think that, along with our line item, the work that's being done with the College of Southern Idaho, that there should be some evenness around the state for how, if that's, if that's a viable strategy, I think that's low-hanging fruit. It's a pretty easy metric to, you know, to measure, the go-on rate either goes up or it doesn't with that activity. And so, I really spent a lot of effort trying to get that, get some traction on that, and that will come out in the recommendations. That's one example.
Excellent, thank you, thank you.
I guess I get to ask you a question now. I was thinking, we had a meeting down in Boise at the Idaho Community College Consortium, and one of the things that came up was the interface between the community colleges and the high schools on dual-credit programs. And as I look to this outcomes-based funding model, I'm still, I guess, concerned what these metrics might ultimately be. It sounds like the recommendation of the committee is that there should be another committee formed in order to technically develop the metrics for the outcomes-based funding. And I'm wondering two things. Would it include consideration of programs like dual-credit, because there might be other programs like that that come up, that community colleges are involved in? And also, would community college have representation on this technical committee? It's my understanding that there was a lot of education of the committee members from business and, and other aspects of education that took place during this process, and I'd hate to lose those people who got educated to people who aren't educated in the issues that we have in Idaho. So, could you comment on those two things?
Well, easy, on dual-credit, I don't think that's going to become a specific outcome variable, because everything's tied to degrees. So, if you can get on a pathway through dual enrollment, you're on your, you're on that pathway to the degree, and so I think that's where the connection's going to come.
Somebody may only get three or four credits in dual-credit.
So, that, and that, they might, and that's the problem. That's, that's why we have this outcomes-based funding, you know, we're being encouraged not to let them do that.
But that's, as I understand it, I mean, we're having issues, not just here, but around the state, with the coordination between high schools and community colleges, and scheduling, and putting, encouraging people to continue on the pathway of dual-credit as opposed to AP, or AP as opposed to dual-credit. And those kind of issues, I think, are going to impact maybe the outcomes-based funding, at least our reports, if we don't have people completing the A.A. degree, for instance.
You're correct. I mean, if we were able to figure out how to let students across the state of Idaho have a more even experience around access and entering into dual enrollment work, it's going to, should have a positive impact on those outcomes of graduates. So, you're right. With respect to Phase Two or Committee Two, boy, I sure hope they keep some of those people that, so, for the rest of the board, the, all the committees, the task force was made up of all eight public college/university presidents, members of the legislature, some on J.FAC, and then also a number of community business representatives. And, you know, to the point on outcomes-based funding, I think that was the most difficult part of the conversation from a learning perspective, was to have folks who are not involved in our world understand some of the differences, and not just the differences between higher education and business, but the difference between the University of Idaho and North Idaho College, and our missions, and, you know, how different they are. So, we will certainly be involved in it. I may be directly involved with it. If I'm not, somebody here will be involved on that group. But I sure hope, because when I heard the chair of the committee report out at Friday's meeting, it was clear that learning had taken place. I mean, and I know just from the conversations with the two presidents that represented higher education on that, on that subgroup, that that was, that took a lot of conversation and a lot of, and that's why they got to the 11th hour and just got to this place. But we'll be, we'll be engaged in that work going forward, and I'm pretty sure people who have been involved in it will stick with it. I hope they do.
I had another question on the, under the adoption of the recommendations of the Governor's Workforce Development Task Force. The recommendation was public higher education system should shift to a competency-based system. I kind of thought it was competency-based, but maybe you can explain to me what's meant by competency-based system as opposed to what we presently have.
I will try. You're right, the work that we do is ultimately, I mean, ultimately, you're, we're teaching to outcomes that we're hoping, not hoping, that we're expecting students to achieve, and that in itself is developing, should be developing competency. Competency-based education is more looking at a set of competencies that a student would have to demonstrate before they're given credit for the class. So, it's, I'm probably not doing that very well, but Lita, do you want to offer some clarity to that?
Chairman Howard, our current system is really based on a credit system, and that credit system is really based on the number hours devoted to teaching and learning in a particular setting. And so, when, and with each course, based on the number hours they receive, well, each course has a set of learning objectives, learning outcomes that we measure through assessment. Many times, it's a multiple-choice questions, it's essays, it's writings, it's all sorts of things that we measure that learning has occurred. In an outcomes-based setting, it is not necessarily a credit-based learning environment. So, rather than learning outcomes that are measured through traditional and standard methods of measuring learning, these outcomes are very prescribed, and many times, skill or application-based outcomes. And so, a student doesn't necessarily have to go into a classroom one hour, three hours a week to get the, the learning done. The learning might be provided in a variety of ways. Oftentimes, it's an open entry, so a student might go into an environment where they would learn and try to achieve these outcomes. And at the point that they have achieved all the outcomes, then they would receive a credential that they have mastered the outcomes.
Okay.
I hope that's helpful.
The, I guess my question, in part is, the reason I want to know the difference between what we're doing and competency-based system is, what's it going to take to shift to a competency-based system? Is there going to be a dramatic change in the way courses are delivered and what we're expecting?
It will be a dramatic change in the way courses are delivered, and it's related to clock hour, and there are accreditation issues around it, and how you, there's only, actually, I think it's Western Governors and, go ahead.
I would just add, in addition to the clock hours and accreditation piece, right now in this country, another huge piece is federal financial aid. So, the community college, Salt Lake City Community College, has really done a very fine job of moving their career and technical education to an outcomes-based model. The challenge with that, though, is they still have not received federal financial aid for those programs, so they have to do it in a non, non-federally financial aid-supported manner, and then they, they have a way of assisting those students through scholarship and other means. So, there has to be some thinking change in the United States to really fully support higher education going to a competency-based model. It's not something I think that Idaho can do completely independently. That's my personal opinion, but it would be a challenge.
Doug?
I guess I'm curious, as I hear Ken's question, and I hear some of the explanation and discussion, to me, in my mind, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not thinking correctly, but when I think of, like, say, welding, to me, that's a competency-based program already. Either you, you get the bead right, and the weld is good, and they judge it accordingly. You know, I mean, it's like Butch being proud about the welding when he took the welding classes, you know, and Ron always teased him about his welding. But am I not understanding, because it seems to me almost everything that CTE is competency-based, because you have a skill set that you either acquired and mastered to a minimum level for industry, or you have it to get your certificate. Are we that far off, or is it the challenge going to be more on the academic transfer Are we that far off or is it the challenge going to be more on the academic transfer side? Excuse me, the academic transfer side with trying to figure out this competency component?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Vanducci, it does seem to be semantics in many ways, but it is also a shift in thinking in the way a student is awarded the credential. So currently, our programs are based on X number of credits that lead to either a certificate or an associate, associate of applied science in the case of CTE or an AS or an AA degree. That's not necessarily the way the credential would be awarded for a competency-based program.
It just, if I mean, it occurs to me as we're trying to help, I can see it, and we know there's a very big distinction between the traditional mode of delivery and credit hour, clock hour and all that. It probably would not hurt for us to put something together just so that you can maybe see the distinctions a little more clearly. And we can do that.
Well, one of the reasons I was asking was, it seems like a very simple sentence. The public higher education system should shift to a competency-based system. It sounds like a fairly complicated and maybe costly, but we're going to be doing some experimenting. It's going to involve maybe policies and things like that. And I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about what all that means, a shift to, and over what period of time, and will it be academics as well as, you know, CTE?
I apologize too. As I'm reading this, I just realized that there was significant debate on this sentence. I mean, remember I said this was handed out at the beginning of the meeting? And this sentence was actually changed to public higher education should consider, remember? It was more, and this came out of the workforce subgroup, and there was questions, are you talking about all of higher education, everything that we teach should move to this, because that's the way it reads? And in the end, we were really limiting this to CTE to start with, although there could certainly be some academic or other applications to it. And to make it more conditional, not that it's a wholesale shift to this type of delivery.
I guess we'll have to wait and see what happens. Yes?
Can I make one additional comment? And knowing that this came out of the recommendations from the Governor's Workforce Development Task Force, I think one of the things that higher education has not yet done a good job at completing a prior learning assessment. And I think that industry is very interested in having incumbent workers come to a college and attain certificates and degrees based on their learning and skills and abilities that they've gained in the workforce. And because as a system, we have not yet come up with a reasonable way to really assess that prior learning and apply it to awarding a certificate or a degree, I think this is somewhat tied into that as well. So again, I would, I would hope that we would focus more on really doing standard prior learning assessments so that we could award credit or credentialing for the skills that an individual's already achieved.
Well, I guess if NIC or the community colleges collectively are going to move toward competency-based system, at least in some of the coursework that's offered, it'd be nice to, you know, get some kind of an idea of how, over what period of time and what that's going to involve and that sort of thing. So maybe at some point in time, if there's further study of that, you could report to us on that. I had another question, just on the status, and maybe Chris can do this or maybe you can, Mr. President. Do you want to use facility? What's the status on that?
Chris?
Chairman Howard, currently, we're under the design review on that facility with the Department of Public Works. So the design has been proposed, and we're going back through that, making sure that all the systems work and that it's delivering what the goal of the project is.
Do we have a timeframe on when we're going to get the facility planned and groundbroken? Is there some kind of a timeframe?
Based on the review of the, of the design documents, at this point, it's still planned to happen in the spring.
For groundbreaking?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, the President? The next agenda item is old business, Compensation Structure Policy 3.02.16. And we had, this is a second reading. Let me just report that in the interim between the last meeting and this meeting, Trustee Wood and I had had a meeting with the Senate and the faculty representatives to discuss the policy, and some proposals were discussed. And there are at least two recommended changes that have been presented to the board. And since we don't have a full board tonight, I would entertain a motion to table this till the next meeting so that we give an opportunity for Trustee Meyer to be here.
I was so moved. Go ahead.
Oh, I'll second Trustee Wood's motion.
Under discussion, if I may?
Yes, please.
I, so the rest of the board hasn't really, you and I fortunately have been deep in the discussions, but the rest of the board hasn't had that opportunity. So I, I know that you have made some edits. I have a couple small suggestions. And I don't know when the rest of the board would get that opportunity to do that. Would that be part of the discussion of the next meeting? Because we wouldn't be able to finalize anything.
No, I think that in between now and then, we can have discussions between the board members, no more than two at a time, so we don't violate the public meeting law, and talk about the proposals that have been passed out. And if people have additional comments, then we can discuss that, just like you and I did.
Okay. But I guess my question is, we don't want to all five bring forward our own policy edits. And so how would we be able to take that input?
I guess I'd have to wait to see what is proposed before we, I can tell you how.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, I mean, we'll see it at the next meeting if there's any, if there's any additional input.
Okay. Well, yeah, I'm glad we're tabling the item for tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
There are some concerns that I have that I think could be shared best, you know, prefer to have some type of workshop to sit down and really look at the term financial emergency and be able to say specifically, what are those critical elements that would put you into that situation that would deem that? And get more specific in this so that it's not left to be subjective. Ten years from now, there might be a whole new board looking at a policy and wondering, what the heck were these people thinking? So I'd just like to clean it up and make it a little easier to base decisions on personally.
I can support a workshop.
And again, when Trustee Meyer gets back, we can look into doing that. All right. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
So, yeah, just let us know. We can, we obviously want to do that before the next board meeting, so we need to get that on the calendar.
Correct. All right. All opposed? The motion to table passes. Next agenda item is Tab Two. It's a study abroad fee for FLAN 207 course. Chris?
Chairman Howard, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to come to you a little bit out of order with the proposal before you to accept a course fee that could not be included in the original budget packet. And the reason for that is that we have two instructors who've been working very diligently to create what is honestly a very exciting offering that I'm tempted to take. It's a study of English culture through the review and reading of British murder mysteries. And this course would include actually a trip to Europe to experience the culture the students have researched. And so this fee would cover the course cost of travel for students to Europe and could not be included because the course was under development prior to the presentation of the budget.
No question?
Yes.
Two questions. Out of curiosity, would this be a standard three-credit-hour course?
I believe this is a standard three-credit-hour course, yes.
And when is the proposed trip? What time? Got to get it on the calendar.
I actually have the instructors here tonight, and they make an answer to this more fully if they would be willing to do so. But I believe this is a summer course. The travel would occur in summer.
Okay.
Spring course with travel in the summer. Thank you, Dr. Burns.
Okay.
And if I can get a little bit more specific, I'm going to look over here. I believe it's actually happening in June.
May.
May, may. I think of summer as June, but May, so that's a good call.
Be interesting to hear the conversations in the living room. Dad, Mom, there's a great class that's being offered.
Any other questions? Chris, I have a question. The $2,500 course fee is for the students. What's proposed with regard to any faculty that go along or any people who would go along with the course in order to help promote it? How's that going to be financed?
That's financed through the course fee. So the two instructors who are actually teaching this course, this covers their travel as well.
Okay. Sure. Yes.
One last question. Approximately how many students do you anticipate in this class? And then is, I'm going to sound like an old lady for a moment here, pardon the term, but do we have enough chaperones for both the males and the females with just two instructors?
Chairman Howard, Trustee Vanducci, we have had these courses for a number of years, and this college does this, in my opinion, very, very well. And so currently, this course has a waiting list of people who are interested in taking this course. We expect this to be, to be a rather large group. But all the people who will be going on this trip will be of age to attend this particular trip. And so the chaperones would be the instructors.
So age is 18 for our purposes, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? We'll need a motion to, to address the approval of the course fee.
So moved. And I would like to add, I want to be a student again, but I would make a motion to approve this course fee.
Without you being a student?
Right.
That's not part of the motion.
All right.
Did you have a second?
Would you like to, Brad?
Go ahead, Todd.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you very much.
So noted, there's some jealousy. No.
Next agenda item is the Board Resolution on Human Rights. Last meeting, we talked about presenting that at this meeting, and I'm going to ask Trustee Wood to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to read it to remind the board what faculty brought forward. And I thought it was especially well done. It was not partisan at all in nature. It really just focused on human rights and civil rights. And if that isn't something that we can celebrate at NIC, then we can't celebrate at all because we're well-known for our support of human rights and civil rights. So I'll read real quickly what it said. "In the aftermath of the events of the University of Virginia, the Faculty Assembly of North Idaho College renews its commitment to respect the equality of all persons regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity. We reject the ideologies of white supremists, the KKK, neo-Nazis, and other hate groups, and renew our commitment to promoting human rights, unity, and diversity on our campuses." So with that, I would make a motion that this board adopt the exact resolution.
So is your motion, then, that we substitute the phrase, "North Idaho College Board of Trustees"?
Yes, thank you. Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Good. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have something.
Yes.
And I want to couch this because people can misunderstand, and I don't want any haters coming at me for this. I'm not a hater, and, you know, I don't know all about these different things that are going on necessarily. We have a lot of things going on in our culture right now that are very disturbing. Some might look at me, and I don't know whether the terms are anymore, white privilege, white whatever. Part of my youth, I was raised in Athol, Idaho, population 190. So whatever spoon somebody thinks was in my mouth wasn't there. I ironed everything I got. My folks had not a penny for college, the first ever graduate from college in my family. So I say this as just a trustee thinking about the college and being a guy who was in the military and been all over the world and served side by side with anybody and everybody. I don't care who, what, or where, you know? So I, I'm concerned about making any statement. So it's not this one in general, so I want to put that out there first. You know, there's the events in St. Louis again here recently for another time. There's, you know, former Governor Andrews passed away. We had hurricanes, and we've had tremendous things going on there. And we've had the shooting out at Freeman High School. And the problem is, people start putting out statements in support of this or that, and then it starts to become an expectation that everyone puts out a statement about everything. It's a rush by our politicians to see who put out the right statement. And then the statement goes out on something, and then you have somebody says, well, that wasn't strong enough, or that was too strong. So you, you put yourself out there and you, and you can be subject to criticism unnecessarily. So I think it's a little bit beyond our purview, outside our mission. We are education. If the Human Rights Education Institute wants to make a statement, I say that's great. And I think that's very appropriate for them if they choose to do such a thing. But for us, setting the precedent of putting out a statement on anything, and we could pick any one of 20 topics, some may be more partisan, some not. But I think, I think it's dangerous to put out a statement and to do that from the college unless it's something specifically related to us that I don't think we need to engage. And even then, sometimes we should show more restraint. I mean, even when Mark Brining was here, and he said, man, don't write that letter about campus carry. It's going to pass. And we did it anyway. And we wrote another letter where we said, man, you really shouldn't do that. It's going to pass. We don't need to interject in that or risk alienating somebody down at the Capitol that we need their votes to get our funding. So sometimes, as a board, and some of you may even find this ironic coming from me at times because I do take positions, but sometimes silent might be better. And this is one of those times where I just don't, Christie said, hey, we're well-known for this. Okay? There's the word diversity in our mission. Okay? We do all that. That's good enough. I think it speaks for itself. I think the college has been out there, we've done it. If we do it, then should CSI and Eastern and the folks in, at CWI, should they do it too? Or they remiss that they don't? Is U of I remiss? Is LCSC, you know, people we share the campus with? Again, I don't want us to have to be compared to anybody. I don't want it to appear that we're pandering or that, you know, we're trying to be politically correct. So I just think that as a college, that we are best served if we don't expose ourselves and put ourselves out there unnecessarily and by making position statements, you know, again, there's so many different things we can support. I mean, we do it by buying tables at events and we, behind the scenes and the things we do at all the different activities and functions. I just, I caution us to do this. You know, I'm in an industry in securities where we try to put nothing in writing, you know? We're very careful about that. It's liability, litigation. Ken can probably appreciate this, being in the law. So I just, again, that's just my thoughts on that. I just think that we'd be wise to just not do anything on this.
Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Vanducci, I, I listened to everything you said, and it's just, we just see, view the world differently, and I can accept that. I say leaders do put themselves out there, and we are leaders. And this is a very, a very well-regarded statement that we do not support white supremists, KKK, neo-Nazis, hate groups, and we renew our commitment to diversity and promoting human rights. And for your question of should the other colleges do it, in my opinion, yes. But that's up for them to decide. This is just this board. We, we do need to step forward. We do need to be those ones that make these statements. And so I, again, I would, I would just reiterate my motion, that yes, we accept, we accept this commitment.
I would just say I respect your opinion, but I don't see it as an inflammatory comment, which I think would put us in a situation where we'd have, be defensive. I think it's a statement of truth, and I think it's one that could be supported, and I would support it.
Todd, you make, you make some good arguments that require us, I think, to give some thought to what we're doing. And were it something more controversial, I would agree with you. I don't think this is particularly controversial. And I look at our mission statement quite frankly, that North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the North Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, and community engagement. And this is the kind of thing where I think a college can take a position on a non-controversial, I think, issue that... I think, issue that means that we have the proper respect for human rights for all. And so at least with regard to this particular proposal, I feel comfortable in moving forward with this, but understanding your argument. Any other comments? Okay, let's vote on the motion to adopt the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I would like to abstain. I'm not opposed to it. I'm not in favor. Again, my position is I just don't think we should do it. So I'm sure I'm going to stand, I'm going to abstain on it.
The resolution passes. The next agenda item, we're going to have to slow this down because we're going to be done in record time tonight.
Oh, my gosh.
No. My reports can be fairly brief. I attended the Idaho Community College Consortium meeting in Boise this last week and there is a report that has just been generated by our coordinator, Jerry G., and that should be sent out to all the trustees, which sets out in more detail what occurred at the meeting. For me, a couple of things that stood out. And one of the things was this issue on dual credit because we started talking about some of the, some of the barriers that we still have to overcome in order to make dual credit fulfill the promise that it holds. And one of them is dealing with the K-12 system in terms of trying to coordinate better, not just scheduling, but also incentives toward these programs in terms of making them work. Right now, not just NIC, but all the other community colleges have expressed difficulty sometimes in building their dual credit courses. And it's going to require some work and maybe some coordination with the State Board of Education or maybe even some legislation if necessary in order to encourage a coordinated program to maximize the likelihood of people being able to sign up for these courses. I have a grandson who now attends North Idaho College and also Lakes High School and Lake City High School. And I can tell you, he's, he had a real difficult time with coordinating getting his courses this year and it was nobody's fault, it was just part of the system that needs to get worked out. So we spent a lot of time talking about that. That's going to require some more conversation. And as I indicated earlier, I'm concerned about things like dual credit being a proper focus of the outcomes-based funding and make sure that those programs are not disadvantaged by some formula or some metrics that don't encourage that or reward it. Other than that, I have nothing further to report other than to acknowledge that we have two trustees in the present going to the ACCT Leadership Conference. President?
And I, I don't think I did it, but I think I failed to report that I had the opportunity today to, at the invitation of Stan Olson, who's the interim acting superintendent for Coeur d'Alene School District, to join about 60 members of the school district and some community folks as well for what they called a data summit. It was a full-day exercise. I had to leave a little bit early, but I had a couple, I had three goals in participating in that. One was to, we're going to be doing something very similar here at this data summit as we get through our, into our planning process and as we get the enrollment management, strategic enrollment management work underway, building out the data profile for a large group of people. So I wanted to see how they did that. I also wanted to learn more about Coeur d'Alene schools, but probably third and most importantly, it was a wonderful opportunity to start to get to know some of the district folks there beyond the superintendent. And Dr. Olson, I met him a couple of weeks ago, is very committed to the idea of getting together with us and our teams and looking at the challenges we have, challenges and opportunities we have in common. And that's one of them. So I, they received NIC very well today. I was welcome to be part of the group. I sat at a roundtable with a group of people and we had flip charts going and the whole thing. And so I, that is another approach that we're going to be taking, try to work directly with the district and say, what do we have in common, both challenges and opportunities? And if that's, if it's these three, four, or five things, dual enrollment being one of them, what are we going to do about it?
Thank you. Yes?
I'm very excited to hear that because, I don't know, years ago, we talked about working together to align curriculum and what a difference it would make in our classrooms. And so I'm glad that, you know, you're reaching out, meeting with people and I hope this continues. When will you meet again?
So he, Dr. Olson has made a commitment to make this one of his priorities during this year of transition so that as we bring in a new superintendent for Coeur d'Alene Public Schools, that the table's already been set for this. So it's just, it's very, it's very optimistic about it. I don't know exactly when and what, but we'll probably invite him to some version of our data summit as well so that we can start to learn more about each other.
Thank you. Any remarks for the good of the order? Yes?
Did you want to say anything more about the conference first?
No.
Okay. Couple things. And one, I've enjoyed working with Superintendent Olson on the K-Tech board. So, and speaking of K-Tech, I want to take 20 seconds here. I was a little bit remiss on my report last month when I mentioned about Jim Tippett needing to resign from the board. And then what I really didn't do is acknowledge Jim and the company he works for, Bayshore Systems, and their support of K-Tech from the go. I mean, Jim and Bayshore were part of that initial group and have supported it all along, Bayshore by allowing Jim to be involved and in other ways that they contributed to K-Tech and the project financially. So I just want to do a shout-out to Jim Tippett and Bayshore Systems out in Rathram for their tremendous support of K-Tech. And basically, thank you for helping make K-Tech happen. The second thing, I do appreciate you guys listening to me on this resolution. I've been working on, thinking on this for a couple of weeks and to be honest, I was a little nervous. And so I made notes, a little apprehensive, to state my position. So thank you for just listening. I wanted it to come across well. I was hoping I would articulate it mostly well, as best as I could. Third thing, and she is not here tonight, but I'd like to do a shout-out. Today is Cassie Silvas's birthday. I know I've already reached out to her, but she probably escapes trying to hear us throw out a happy birthday song to her. But hopefully she's celebrating somewhere and enjoying her special day. So Cassie, if you see this, happy birthday. And that's all I have, sir. Other than I'm going with Brad to the conference.
Just real quick, I don't know where the shirts came from, but thank you, thank you. And it's a long sleeve. I'm going to wear it tomorrow. I should wash it maybe, right? But I like it. Thank you.
These are the shirts that everyone who attended convocation were given as participants in that activity. And we thought, oh, and you also, you have, to point this out, you have a bookmarker. This is the logo for our branded planning activity that we're going through. And you'll see things, so from time to time, you'll get communications around planning and it should be recognizable with this and grounded in our mission, planning for our future, cultivate NIC.
Very nice, very nice.
Lita, you had a comment?
Yes, for the good of the order, I would make sure the board is aware that Lisa Kellerman received the Sterling Silver Award this month.
That's right.
And I would tell you that her peers, the people who nominated her, just gave her tremendous accolades for the difference that she has made in the library and working hand-in-hand with other faculty to improve information literacy for our students. So congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any more remarks for the good of the order? Hearing none? We're adjourned.